Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. We have our regular council meeting November 9th, 2017. City Manager with us, he is willing to lead us in our dedication pledge to the flag. If everyone would please stand.
Let us pray, please. Our heavenly fathers, we come to the night where we etch your order. Each one here to make the right choice for our sins in that Father. Thank you for each one honored with Lord, our city manager and all that to you, Father. Take and bless this sin, Lord, the way you say, Father. Not our will, but God's, thy will. To be known in each one of our lives and hands. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Janet, if we can have the roll call, please.
Mayor Lambert.
Here.
Councilmember Schulman.
Here.
Councilmember Cagle.
Here.
Councilmember Allen.
Here.
City Manager Miller.
Here.
City Attorney Bitch.
Here.
We have Mr. Jason Martin here with us from Henderson, Petrosina, McCullough. He is going to share with us the fiscal year 2016-17 audit. Jason, do you mind coming forward? It's always good to see you, sir.
Likewise, likewise. I'm a gentleman with my head on me, so it scares me a little bit. No, thank you, guys. We always enjoy conducting the audit on behalf of East Ridge and the council and citizens of East Ridge and my colleague Zach really ran the engagement this year, so I'll let Zach tell you all about just that audit process and how things went and how it come back and really go through the numbers with you all and tell you really how you all stand as of June 30, 2017.
Evening, everybody. First of all, let me say it's a pleasure to be here speaking in front of you. Jason asked me to come up and say just a couple of words about our audit process. This was my first year on the engagement and I'm happy to say that I feel everything went very smoothly. You've got an excellent accounting staff and excellent city manager. They were able to provide us with all of the requested information in a very timely fashion, which allowed things to go very, very smoothly.
It's always good to hear first set of eyes on operations of the city of East Ridge. So I'll go through some of the numbers. You know, how we judge whether you had a good audit or bad audit is really take a step back and look at how many general entries we proposed to clean up things. And so this year, we didn't have any material general entries. There were some small entries that Diane gave us after we had gotten started, so having to report that, that's always a good thing. And that way, we feel comfortable that the numbers that you all were getting throughout the year are accurate. You know, if we come in and do an audit and we made a ton of adjustments and entries, we really, that leads us to feel as if you guys don't get good financial data during the year. So Diane's done a great job and Scott Muller's done a great job as well, too, with his financial background. I think the city of East Ridge, you all make great financial data throughout the year and make good decisions. Just to go over some of the highlights of this year's operations. This audit report that you have in front of you is a draft form because city managers still working on the management discussion and analysis. And so that won't change. That's the GASP requirement of financial reporting requirement. So the numbers in here won't change at all, it's just a prelim. It's really a preamble to your audit and financial statements. So I do want to turn your attention to page 12 in your audit report. You know, I always like to talk about fund balance in the general fund. Fund balance is really like your reserve is there for the city as a whole. And so really, you need experts, say you need, any healthy city would need two to four months of reserve of your current year's expenditures. And so I always like to do this calculation when we do audits to see what different cities are. And most cities are honestly struggling with that. Most cities, really, they have one to two months of reserve now, just because of times. Sales tax dollars are slowing down for some of our cities as well. But I'm happy to note that East Ridge, your fund balance on page 12 in your general fund, bottom of the page there is $5.4 million. But if you compare that against your current year expenditures to $12.2 million, you have about five months of reserve. And so that's to be commended. It shows that you all are very conservative in how you all count the budget and spend over dollars. And so I did want to point that out. And one of the things that city manager and our team really discussed early on in the audit is that we have a good accounting team, but I think the challenge moving forward for East Ridge is making sure you don't over commit on the dollars that are coming from the border region. I don't think you have. I think city manager is very, very in the know of how to project out projects because a project that you take on today, there's always the cost down the road. And so we discussed, he's very in tune with not to commit for a project today that's going to cost a lot in the future. For instance, we audit some cities, they have, they spend a lot of dollars on public parks and all. And so those public parks, there's a certain dollar amount that goes towards getting that park up and going for the general public. But that park has to be maintained throughout the years, which is a cost to the city. So that's just one example. So I think that'll be the challenge for you all moving forward is to really listen to your city manager and, because he has looked at some of your projected budgets and he knows those projected projects and the future cost and benefit to the city of East Ridge. So please just keep that in mind. I also want to talk about your budget, your general fund budget on page 18. If you look at the general fund budget, the budget plan, that's council spending plan. So council has a spending plan that management has to operate within. And so council approved, you see the budget, it's a balanced budget there. You approve $12.8 million for revenues and $12.8 million, you consider all transfers and all and expenses. So you look at the revised budget, the final budget that you ended up with, and so you did, you budgeted, you budgeted, you used some of your fund balance, about $694,000 because of anticipated projects. So you anticipated revenues coming in a little bit more than original and so you increased your expenditures by, to use up some of your fund balance in that. So if you look at your actual in your variance column, for instance, you budgeted total revenues, you budgeted $13.1 million where you actually collected $13.4 million. So that's a surplus of $296,000. On your expenditure side, you budgeted $12.6 million, some projects and all, but you only spent $12.2 million, that's a surplus of $436,000. And so if you look at everything, you had a surplus of your final budget of $719,000 for the year. And I think, Diane, you can correct me, but I think there were some projects that the city just didn't get to. You budgeted for those projects and you just couldn't do them, so. But management operated within this body spending plan, which is always a good thing. Other than that, we didn't have any filings at all this year. There were some small things we pointed out to the administration, management, but we didn't have any significant deficiencies and material weaknesses this year. And we always expect that going into an audit, so that met our expectations. So that's a good snapshot. Do you have anything else to add?
No, I think it went well. We're appreciative. Usually when you look at the revenue stream, I mean, we came in about 97, 98 percent, which is pretty good in these day and times. And on the expenditure side, we came about 98.5 percent, which you do want to do. You don't want to go over 100 because you don't want to end up spending 90 percent. You have people sitting there saying, "Well, you know, it's been 90 percent, what did we get done?"
Right.
So usually between 90, I always look at it between 95 and 100 percent on the expenditure side, doing what we were there. So I was pleased with the results of your audit.
Well, thanks. Any additional questions from the council force? Again, thanks for the opportunity and we look forward to it again this time next year.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
You too.
Next item is the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the October 26th agenda work session as well as the minutes from the October 26th regular council meeting. Motion approved. We have a motion and a second to approve. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Schulman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cagle.
Yes.
Councilmember Allen.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
If you'd like.
Yes.
All right. At this time, we will entertain communication from citizens. We have a sign in sheet there that, we'll get to those names first. If you didn't have opportunity to sign in, then we'll catch you at the end of the citizen comment period. You'll still have an opportunity. I'll go through our regular little spiel here. If you're a resident of the city of East Ridge or a business owner here in the city, if you have a comment, question, or concern you'd like to bring to the council, this is your opportunity to do so. You will come to one of the microphones here at the front and state your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes. And the first name that we have on here, you have to forgive me, I don't know what the last name is, Lee is the first name?
Tullis. Do you have that on your head?
Lee Tullis. If you'll come forward, sir. If you will, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lee Tullis. I live at 3413 Conover Avenue. I understand there's a movement about trying to brand alcoholic beverages into Camp Jordan Park. And I want to give you a little history about the recreation department of this city. Many years ago, we had three fields, a spring tree, and we had five yards to tear off. We had outgrown Oxley. The city acquired some property down there, which we know now as Camp Jordan. It was a hay field. We finally got a movement to develop it. We had some meetings in Knoxville, Atlanta, Nashville. They appointed a set committee to figure and work out the details, get the new park. We started out with phase one, which was four fields. One of the things we put a big emphasis on was how to govern the park and the rules and regulations. We knew that Mike Franklin and Coach James and football players were taking care of the existing fields, but we made recommendations and they hired random birds to see that Chet looked at to be our first field system. During the course of our meetings, there was two things we discussed. And one was not allowing alcohol, rock, of any form in any of our recreation complex, especially at Camp Jordan. Number two was no tobacco products to be allowed on the field because we had so many people, coaches, including umpires, which at that time, I was an umpire, we liked to chew the tobacco. We didn't care where we spit, we smoked, we didn't care where we threw the cigarette butt. So those two things was put in the minutes at that time, when Tom Armenter was the head of that committee. And I can name everybody who's on that committee, so I have to, but the big emphasis we had at that time, "Oh, this is a recreation park and the future of our young people in this town, we'd never allow alcohol, beverage to be in that park in any form of fashion." And I'm going to fight it. I don't think we need it in there now. Over the years, we've developed into multiple golf fields, which you have adult play there, soccer fields that's come in, which has been good for this city. But I am totally against it and I'm going to go with everything I can to stop it. You're exposed to enough now of what's going on in society without being exposed to something else. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next person is Laura Mathis, 2100 McBrien Road.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Laura Mathis, 2100 McBrien Road. I just had a question about the five-year plan that was going to be brought up at the December meeting. And I wondered if the Blue Ribbon Committee, the last time I talked to somebody on the Blue Ribbon Committee, they said they were told to come back to stunt with the recommendations. So I just wondered had that meeting taken place?
When is that set?
We're meeting next Wednesday to look at the plan. We've already looked at it once, or we looked at it again, but that is not the final plan. There will be, there will be an opportunity for, just like we did last time over here, where you folks got a chance to come in and say what you would like to have. That'll happen as well. It's all part of the process. Am I right?
No, 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 no. It's already gone through two public hearings on this.
I got two things based up.
That were, well, I want to correct you so that Ms. Mathis and everyone else understands what we've been through. We've had two public input sessions on this plan. We've had a survey that went out on this plan. It has been presented to the city council on this plan. So we've had actually four opportunities for public input. And then it's going to go to the Blue Ribbon, it went to the Planning Commission last night because they are the ALPA, our local planning agency. So the Planning Commission will look at it and then the Blue Ribbon Recreation will look at it and then will come before the city council at the December 14th meeting for at least adoption. I need some kind of, we're putting, we're working on grants right now for the splash pad and replacement of the recreation equipment over there. We haven't set up those public input meetings yet. They will be set up, but we need to have the plan adopted so I and my staff know what to concentrate on. For example, there's a pavilion in there. I don't have any authorization from this council to start a pavilion project. That's why I want them to adopt a plan and I know what I need to do with my staff members to move forward.
Okay. So the Planning Commission will see it before?
They see it, they saw it last night, Monday night. They looked at it, but they will review it again at their first meeting in December.
Yes. They will, they've had a presentation that day. They will be coming back the first Monday in December to vote it for their approval. The Blue Ribbon Committee should, as some said, will be meeting on Wednesday, get their approval. Then we input those two days through the resolution that it will bring back to council on December 24, December 14.
I was just curious because I did attend the public session.
I know you did.
And I attended the Planning Commission meeting and I've just been trying to keep track of the project.
Yeah. So we have this report, but I want to get it finally adopted so that my staff and we can, we also need this plan adopted and put in for the grants.
Sounds good.
Thank you. The next person is Charles McCullough, 1214 Reeves Avenue.
Hello. My name is Charles McCullough at 1214 Reeves. I just wanted to talk for a minute about the same park's plan. First of all, after looking at it, I mean, it looks like a good plan and it's good to see some parks development, not just in Camp Jordan, but all through the city. And I'm really impressed with how much community input went into it and it wasn't just a few people deciding, okay, this is what we need, everyone do this, no matter what anybody says. So I'm really impressed with that. In particular, I'm glad we have it up, our go ahead. It's good to see concrete plans for that. I'm a little concerned about the location being in the Springbelle property. With that being in the flood plain, I just want to make sure that as we're going through that process, we make sure to think about adequate drainage for that because I remember I used to live in an old apartment complex that actually had a park for residents to use that was empty all the time because it was a low lying area with no drainage, which was a little bit all the time. So I just wanted to make sure, before we get too far into it, that we make sure drainage is part of the plan.
You look at, but most of it should just top the field.
Yeah.
If we have, you know, we're going to design a park to have three separate areas, one for large dogs, one for small dogs, and the other one which will, which will rotate because if you have one for small and one for large, it'll beat the grass up and you never have an opportunity to sow it back again, you know, sow seeds. So if we rotate the parks, it's dispensing, drainage would be running into the creek anyway. There'll be some drainage area to look into here, but if it floods or areas are flooded, we can knock that one out and build up the other one.
Okay. Yeah, that's, yeah, that was just, I saw the working plan, I just wanted to make sure I'm thinking about that. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, it's a tough room to plan your lake, four areas, then what you've got, two reusing and then two that...
I don't think, I don't, I don't really think you need...
Just talking about receiving.
I, I know, I understand what you're saying. It's just about weighing, you know, you want to make the dog park functional. I've seen too many dog parks built on one acre. Last dog park I built was seven acres for the seven floor and four. Now, we don't have 15 acres out there, but I will say that little dogs really don't chew up the grass as big dogs do. And a lot of people that have a dog at 30 pounds or more are going to put that dog, even though considering a small dog, don't put in with big dogs. The little dogs like the one you have, you don't put that in with big dogs.
All right. That is all for the folks who signed in. Now, if you didn't get a chance to sign in and you would still like to address the council, certainly you may do so. Yes, sir. You'll come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Mr. Christopher Bones, 5335 Clement Road. And I also own a house at 5340 Clement Road, which I built for retirement house. And I couldn't be more against and I agree with a gentleman who came earlier about liquor in Camp Jordan. Christopher Bones. And I had experience with liquor in the parks also as a, growing up in Cincinnati, Ohio, on Yankee land where liquor's a part of everything. And nothing good ever came out of it and you finally had to throw it out in the parks because it was always trouble, always arrests, always fights, always trouble. And we go, we frequent Camp Jordan. My children both live in, have son and daughter live in East Ridge. I got six, five grandkids here. We frequent the park all the time. And even if it's just liquor and event, if we're there walking in the park and we have to be subjective of that, I can't stand being around drunks. I don't like it. I've never liked it, except for when I was a Hellraiser and then I liked it. And, you know, those days are long gone. And I've been for the city of East Ridge and we voted for you folks. And my church, you know, we had a little over 100, probably 120 on our rolls. Our whole church is against it. We spend a lot of money in East Ridge, our people spend a lot of money in East Ridge. When they had old graffiti in East Ridge, we had our own cost, we went around and removed it and I personally helped remove it. You guys gave me the city, Mayor Steele gave me the key to the city. And I want this to be a family friendly place. Like I said, our kids go to Camp Jordan all the time. I got two boys living with me that they're, I got people custody of, they're in the schools here. We spend, every dollar we can spend in East Ridge to support our community. And we don't have to do that, I choose to do that. And we pay more so that we can support the city of East Ridge. And I'll tell you right now, I am against it, I couldn't be more against it. And as the gentleman said, I will work against anyone who votes for it. And our congregation will work against anyone who votes for it. And I will organize the churches in East Ridge to do the same, personally. I know the pastors in East Ridge personally. And we didn't, you all ran on Christian values and church attendance and membership and all those things. And I just expect certain things out of people that profess Christianity. There's all kinds of alcohol in East Ridge, it's available, anyone who wants it. But there are obvious places where we don't have. And I think a public park that the residents of East Ridge use extensively and usually when on special events is people from all over the country. And they don't care about East Ridge or the residents of East Ridge. And that's a fact. And I plan on retiring here, that's why I bought the second house to retire in East Ridge when I move out of Parsonage. And my children want to be in East Ridge, but they're deciding whether or not they're going to leave the city or not based upon the direction the city goes. And if you want young couples to move into this city and stay here, you have to do things that are going to want them to come and not want them to leave. In their estimation, they feel like Ringgold and other places in North Georgia are more family friendly and wholesome, which I try and tell them, please stay in East Ridge. East Ridge is getting better, not worse. But there are certain things that are counterproductive to East Ridge being better. And again, you know, there ought to be some places where we can go and not have to worry about that. We ought to be able to walk around the track and not have to look at a bunch of trunks no matter what's going on in the park. And I hope that you'll make the right decision concerning this. I know there's going to be people for it because of money. But I guarantee you, the Christian community as a whole against it. And again, if we have to organize, which I hope we all have to, but we will, and our voices will be heard. I hope you'll hear our voices tonight. Our church family's here. Most of our church family lives in East Ridge. And I tell you that we could not be more against it. So please consider how the people, how that vote would affect the residents of East Ridge, people who live here and use that park on a weekly basis, sometimes a daily basis. And again, I don't want to have to be a thing where, oh, we can't go there because those people are there because we're in fear of what might take place. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to the council.
Thank you, sir. Do we have another? You'll be next? You can come on then, no, no, you can come on then. And you'll be after that.
Hi. My name's Teresa Chumley. I live at 1600 The Avenue. I have a few questions about that. How many people in East Ridge actually use the park? How many people from outside actually use the park? Is my question.
Those are good questions. I'm not sure we have those numbers, don't we have any kind of...
Because that would be really interesting for us to not only look through East Ridge, but to look outside of East Ridge as well. And when I was brought up in the church at Jones Memorial, I was told not to judge. And to me, that's what we're doing at this point, is judging and saying, this person is alcoholic because they drank one beer. I'm not getting into religion tonight, but I don't understand what we're doing to benefit the city. And it's only in certain areas that the beer is going to be served. It's not every time. And if it's a not, how many people are going to be there from the city of East Ridge? And if it's a not, how many people are going to be there from the city of East Ridge? Is my question. But not all of the churches are against it. Not all, you cannot put that in there, I'm sorry, you cannot group it. You may think, you can, you may, you know, say you're going to leave East Ridge. You know, that's fine. But you got to think for everybody and not just that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Erin Rigman, and I live at five zero zero one, Clinton Drive. I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but I just feel like I do need to say something. When we look at the growth in Chattanooga at the business group, it's microbreweries. It's Chattanooga has done amazing things and brought a lot of jobs to Chattanooga. We have an opportunity, as being right through the tunnel, of gaining that growth from the south side, of expanding that growth, which if you've not been to the south side of Chattanooga lately, you need to go check it out because there's lots of restaurants, art galleries, tourism. So we have an opportunity, if we do allow alcohol sales on a limited basis at events, to kind of gain that, to kind of take part in that growth. One thing, I did not grow up here, I've lived in East Ridge for several years. The thing that, I love the city. Anyone that knows me knows that I do anything I can, I'm active in several different organizations volunteering my time. The one thing I don't like about East Ridge is a lot of the residents are so against change. This community is changing. East Ridge Elementary has kids of twenty different nations. That's different religions, that's different languages. We have to have change. How we embrace that and view them our terms, I mean, that's what we need to do. So if we set the right rules as far as alcohol sales and come together as a community and see that it is a great opportunity to, to build business, if it truly is. I know the numbers need to be run and, and I know there's issues with like state grants and things like that, but I definitely think it's something we need to consider. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have another? Yes, sir.
Daniel Mann, it's nine and ten, Cityville Circle. And I was on the board before, I fought this before, when they tried to put beer down there before. And the main thing is, I'm concerned about the kids down there playing some runs. I've got grandkids that plays down there. They love the park. And I'm afraid what's going to happen. It did in Chattanooga, it did in Ross level Wells. When they brought it in, the parks in Rossville, Georgia got destroyed because nobody had no control, nothing. But I'm here tonight to say I'm against that beer in the park because our taxpayers have put a lot of money, at one of you sisters, put a lot of money in that park. Folks out here have put a lot of money in that park, the grand, part of it is, I remember when it first started out, it was a, like he said, kind of a hayfield. Taxpayers spend a lot of money beginning what's out right now. And I wish you'd thank before you vote to put it in there, please help me get that back.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have another? Yes, sir.
My name's Richard Cook, six zero seven, Marlboro Avenue. I hadn't planned on talking tonight, but I felt compelled to. I've lived in East Ridge since, well, all of my life. I remember back in the seventies when I was a teenager, there was an opportunity for East Ridge to vote in liquor by the drink. And it was fought by the opponents tooth and nail, and for thirty years plus, the city did not move forward with the rest of the surrounding area like Chattanooga. We lost out. I lived close to Interstate seventy-five. When I was a boy, that was the third highest concentration of motel rooms around an interstate exchange. There were thriving mainstream hotels and motels, I'm sure you even remember that. When Liquor by the Drink failed, those businesses began to decline. Some closed, some were repurposed, changed their business plans, and we were left with extended state motels. The sky is not falling. We passed Liquor by the Drink in the early two thousands, and what happened? We have a handful of restaurants on Ringgold Road, essentially, that have a liquor license, and they serve mixed drinks to their patrons. The sky did not fall, the world did not come to an end. This is a tempest in a teapot. Our park is a wonderful park. We have an opportunity to make it even better. We can have promoters not immediately mark East Ridge off the list of a venue for a nice event because their, their plan is to serve beer or wine. People, let's move into the twenty-first century. It's time to move forward. The park is not going to be destroyed because our city officials permit on a special use basis the serving of alcohol. I think it will contribute to the quality of life of the vast majority of people in East Ridge. I understand there are people who are opposed to drinking alcohol on a religious basis, on a philosophical basis. I respect you for that. But let's not put pressure on our elected officials and threaten to vote them out come the next election. Let's look forward as a city. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, the council. Good to see you tonight. I'm Brent Hoffman from Stanley Heights Baptist Church, fifteen twelve, with Brian and Brooke. A matter of alcohol in, in the parks and all of that, much has been said. I'll just say very little about it to make my voice known on it. One is the morality of it. Everybody has their opinion on it, but that's, there's a view that I think we need to consider, the morality of it in a public park. Beyond that, I think the wisdom of it, and thinking long-term, and the use of these parks, all that goes into it and potential issues that could result from it. And then, you know, the extent of it, how far does this go? Is this really going to make East Ridge a better place overall? Is this, what is this going to do for the health of our city? And for the long-term health of our city, has Camp Jordan's growth been hindered from it at this point? And so I hope that you are very wise in your decision. I know from my standpoint, I'm not, I'm opposed to it, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you, sir. Do we have another? So we will move on to communication from council members. Mr. Pagan, start with you.
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank these people who took their time to give your thoughts and opinions on this thing, because I've got my own. And get the ordinance change that we got in front of us, you know, late yesterday evening. And today, I spent all day researching things, and I didn't know that the ordinance change was going to be temporary special event permit on city property. The city council should have the authority to issue at one time temporary permit for the sale, consumption, and or possession of beer owned for a period, and I could say for three days, on any city-owned property, public parks, and/or public sidewalks, the right of way by approving an application. And they take, well, be subject to our public sidewalks, our highways, being suddenly selling beer. So I've looked at, you all know about that. Several things, like Title eleven, eleven dash one oh one. Drinking alcoholic beverages in public is should be unlawful for any person to drink or consume an open can of bottle of beer or intoxicating liquor near or on any public street, alley, avenue, highway, sidewalk, public park, public school ground, or under public place. And then also in this, when it's chapter five, it says, it says eleven dash five oh two, it says interference is tracked. It shall be unlawful for any person to sit, stand, or engage in any activity whether on any public street, sidewalk, bridge, or public ground in such a manner to prevent, obstruct, or interfere with free passage of pedestrian or vehicle. So if we issue a temporary permit for people to go out on their sidewalks and their right of ways, that's not interfering with our traffic, I don't know what is. And then there's another little thing right here that I found. This Title eleven referred to sidewalks and streets non-traffic in Title sixteen. Title sixteen one oh one, obstructing streets, alleys, or sidewalks for illegal. No person shall use or occupy any portion of public street, alley, sidewalk, or right of way for the purpose of storing, selling, or exhibiting any goods, wares, merchandise, or materials. So I just don't see how we could pass a permit here to allow these people to be on our public sidewalks or right of ways. And back to the park, I thought this was going to be a park, special event, maybe the recreation center over here. But I'm still dead against us allowing these permits or special events because if we have to lower our morals, to make a profit with the city of East Ridge, then we need to lower our budget from having been on that property out for the sale of beer and liquor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sweet.
I too would like to thank you and spoke and push your opinion, I do appreciate it and take that into consideration. Because I've been approached from both sides, and so we need to work through this and evaluate and see what's the best decision. The other thing I'd like to mention is also, we have a community Thanksgiving, Wednesday, November fifteenth, at five forty-five. You know, at Jones Memorial United Methodist Church, we'd like for RSVP. Everyone's invited by Monday the thirteenth, and the number is eight nine two eight four fifteen one, eight nine two eight five. If you'd mind, we'd like to attend the community Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Ms. Hopp.
Yes, I would like to say that as far as beer and wine on city property, I represent both sides of the issue, not just the citizens who are against it, but the citizens who are for it. And that's what we have to consider. And we have to look at what we're going to lose if we don't have those, that option at Camp Jordan or if we have a town center which we're wanting to build. I don't believe it's my responsibility, everyone has different morals, and I can't say because someone drinks, they have no morals. I think that is just a terrible thing for anybody to say. I think most of us would agree that not having Liquor by the Drink for thirty years in East Ridge was a detriment to our economic growth and development, and that's why we look the way we look today. We need to look at all, all that.
Thank you. Just want to mention a couple of things. Would like to say thank you to everyone that was here tonight, just as the others have done previously. Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules and everything that's going on this time of year to come, to come here. It, it means a lot for this body to get input. And I don't care what side of the issue you're on, it's important. And frankly, I wish we, we received input on more things. That it didn't take something like this issue to, to get people to speak out. And I understand what I'm saying, but sometimes that means people are going to say things that I don't agree with or that they don't agree with me on something, and that's fine. But it's, it's a very important part of what we do, is to know what is being thought by the people that we represent. And again, it doesn't matter what side of the issue you're on, it's important for us to know. We have a great community, we really do. And I'll tell you flat out, I don't know what this vote is going to look like tonight, if there's going to be a vote. I have no idea. But I know we've got good people on both sides. And ultimately, each person up here will have to make a decision based on what they believe. Is it going to move us forward? Is it going to have a significant impact at all either way? It's, again, a matter of conscience, you know. But again, I appreciate everyone expressing their opinion because it does help. Again, we will have, I'm sure, a more robust discussion in just a few minutes. But I do want to mention, not related to that issue, of course, we have the Christmas parade coming up a week from Saturday, November eighteenth. Would encourage everyone to participate. If you're not actually in the parade, then come out and enjoy the parade. It is, it is just an awesome event every year, see that many people come out. I think, I think we're probably amongst the first to have a Christmas parade. I mean, it precedes Thanksgiving, so we're poor bit of a beat.
We are the first.
We are the first, yes. I always feel funny waving at people and saying Merry Christmas, and people yell back at me, well, Happy Thanksgiving. Can't forget this. But anyway, I would encourage everyone to come out to, to the Christmas parade. And we have a lot of great things going on this time of year. And let's be thankful that we had what we have and we're, we're here to enjoy every day. And sometimes I think we take it for granted. Ms. Hopp.
Just want to bring up very, very briefly our big major project going on at X One. The progress report, about twenty-five percent complete as of the end of October. They're working seven days a week. So I'll just caution everybody, when you drive over on Ringgold Road over X One, that there's going to be rain changes constantly throughout the days. And sometimes work stop jizz, where you just kind of have to stop for a while and wait. Apologize for that. We're trying to get this project done and opened and completed on Memorial Day. That's our plans right now for, for, I think, when I looked at the time, we are about two and a half, three days ahead of schedule, which is good because the past week we've had some rain that puts us behind and we're dead. But overall, we're doing, we're doing well. So just ask for your patience and cooperation when you're crossing over that part of town. When it's completed, it's going to be beautiful. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'll have to read on this a little bit. I heard today, T-Dot, planning on starting one for a seventy-five split, about the time we're getting through. There's a post, it's going to be Yarrow, Yarrow Barrow City down there, starting probably this summer.
Actually, they're, they're in the midst now of doing a design bill for... Uh, actually, they're, they're in the midst now of doing a design build for Twenty-Four Seventy-Five. That means I have one firm that's gonna do the whole thing, from the design right into the build. And one good thing is I've got assurances from PDOT Region Two that I'm gonna be sitting at the table, because we have three bridges up there on the south terrace area that are gonna be affected off Twenty-Four. So we'll have a little input, but they're gonna be widening that roadway to the west. Construction is set, their hopeless construction is starting October of two thousand eighteen, that's a year from now. That means we're gonna see a lot of construction going on, that's gonna be a major mess, and they know what. We're all gonna be working together to try to make sure that the vehicle traffic flows through our city, and that we're ready for it. But it's needed, everybody certainly realized when that's done, that that will add some real value to Twenty-Four Seventy-Five area.
And hopefully greatly improve safety in that area. That's, of course, one of the reasons, primary reasons why TDOT has kicked in money on our redevelopment project is because of the safety issue by removing one of those clover leaves, they're next in one, helps a lot. So yeah, we, we'll be a mess for a while, but the end result hopefully will, will be worth it. All right, we will move to old business. Item A, ordinance number one zero five seven on second final reading.
An order to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend the East Ridge City Code Title II, Chapter One, titled Library Board, by incorporating new provisions pursuant to applicable law as established in the two thousand seventeen Tennessee Public Act, Chapter one twenty-six.
Motion approved.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second to approve, really, comment, question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Beerstool?
Yes.
Councilmember Haggel?
Yes.
Councilmember Alton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Labor?
Yes. Item is approved. Item B, ordinance one zero five nine, also on second final reading.
An order to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend ordinance number one zero five four entitled, in order to provide revenue for the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, for the fiscal year of July one, two thousand seventeen to June thirty, two thousand eighteen, appropriate the same to the payment of the expenses of the municipal government by designating a portion of the fund balance of the general fund, and by changing the revenues of the general fund, drug fund, debt service fund, and capital projects fund, and by changing the expenditures of the general fund, DOJ forfeiture fund, drug fund, solid waste fund, debt service fund, and capital projects fund.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Council, is there any question? Roll call, please.
Ms. Beerstool?
Yes.
Councilmember Haggel?
Yes.
Councilmember Alton?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Labor?
Yes. Ordinance is approved. Onto new business. Item A, we referenced earlier, we do have a draft ordinance for one zero six zero.
An order to the City Council of the City of East Ridge, Tennessee, to amend Title Eight, Chapter Two, Section eight dash two zero seven, permit required for engaging in beer business in Section eight dash two one nine, temporary special events permit, and adding in Section eight dash two two zero, temporary special events permit on city property.
Motion approved.
Second.
We have a, we have a motion and a second, yes, sir.
If this motion passes, we're gonna be able to issue a permit on the sidewalks, the rightways, for consumption, selling, alcoholic beverages.
I will remind everyone, this is first reading of the ordinance, so it wouldn't have to be voted on a second time.
Yes, ma'am.
I just, I just want to make everyone understand.
You know, I just got this yesterday, so, and I didn't know the sidewalks and the rightways, so I was asking verification, help all the, help all the families who came. Really good. About my people.
I, I will be the first to admit that I am somewhat ignorant on, on what I'm about to mention. I heard recently that there's an effort in Chattanooga to make a street beside the Chuchu, to essentially have, allow people to have open containers out there. So I would think that ties in to...
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what happened when you did the Chuchu.
It's technically, I think it's a public street.
Station Street.
It's in Station Street. So I, again, I, I'm ignorant on how, how that can go forward and, and all the rest of it would seem to be.
I know they don't have time to come in to get a special permit now to do that. Next year, our Christmas Parade going up down Ringel Road, are we gonna allow vendors to sell up here, down here, selling beer, walking up down the sidewalks? That's, that's what sticks in my gullet, sidewalks and rightways, allowing consumption and selling beer in the rightways and sidewalks.
I thought it was gonna be case by case.
Yeah, it, it would be a case by case.
Like what I said, each case comes in, and it's here that we have given the plane to cause it to be.
You are, the language as it says now, or is proposed to this ordinance, city-owned property, public parks, and more public sidewalks and rightways. Council can strike sidewalks and public rightways, you don't have to go with those. That can be stripped from this, you can limit the city-owned property where you want to allow it to be done. You can say that we're only going to, city-owned property would be, or public parks would only be, the community center and, uh, Camp Jordan? I mean, I don't know whether the council just wouldn't wanna have beer lying sold in the city park, that's a public park. So I mean, we can refine this more to what the council wants. This is first read, the direction that, that the city attorney and I got at the last meeting was, prepare something and ring it back to us, this is just the first draft. You need, it's up to the council what you wanna do with it. Are you defining, can you further define this as far as, you're right, by saying city-owned property, if you say city-owned property, that actually does include streets and rightways, because that's city property. And they would have to go through that process, but the process is rigid enough, if you read all of this in here, as the conditions for approval, that going through the committee, my committee, of police chief, fire chief, park recreation director, building official, sanitation superintendent, and myself, are looking for stipulations of all of this. It's not gonna be just open season, it's gonna have to be contained. And that would come to the council, it's up to the council ultimately to grant that permit, but the process is not gonna be something where a person comes in and just fills out a permit, goes out there, sells it. It's gotta be approved to the, to the staff, and it's gotta be approved to the city council, this event is not going to conflict with other types of events going on. It's not going to be an outrageous event, that there aren't gonna be parameters, rules, regulations. And then further, that in here, we have language that an event coming in are going to have to meet certain requirements as police, fire, sanitation, they're gonna have to pay for those services, not the residents of the community. They pay for that services, that language is in here. So for net proceeds, I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, there's a lot of rigid requirements that are, that are in.
Now, you say the event, okay? Are we giving the event the selling of the beer, or are we giving our contract concession here to the selling of beer? Then, is he having to, he's already under contract with us.
We have a finer contract than you or not, right, so?
Maybe this can help.
That's a question I'm gonna have to defer to the city attorney on. And concession is...
They're, they're part of your contract.
And concession is, is, is an item that needs to be more valid.
In order to be able to sell beer, you have to have a license. And so to the extent that you have a license, you can't sell beer, a city cannot own a license. To the extent that it's city-owned property, there are really only two entities that have the right to sell beer, that's a nonprofit political, nonprofit or political corporation, or a caterer. And if it's a caterer, the caterer has to collect one hundred percent of proceeds, and they can donate it thereafter, but there's, they all, they have to, the caterer has to take those proceeds. If it's a nonprofit, the nonprofit has to collect those profits, receive the connection with the sale of beer, and they, they can donate too, but it would not be somebody that you offer the ability to sell beer, say Camp Jordan, somebody else can sell, it's gotta be someone with a license, a permit to sell.
I didn't have time to check on this, but do they have to have some kind of special help permit through the health department, other than a special permit here, sir?
I believe, excuse me. I believe they do if they sell food.
Great.
Yes.
So the, being a person, it's not gonna be Mr. Beerstool selling beer, say, behind this go, since he's here, the tattoo thing, they enable the piercing. So we give them the special permit license, so they don't, they are not still following the sign claims, have to go get the health licenses?
Well, technically, unless that tattoo group owns a catering license or a nonprofit, they can't get that permit. They would have to go hire a caterer that has a permit to the T E A B C, and then they would have to pay that caterer to go and get the beer permit, only that caterer can get it.
Before we go any further, I would, if you don't mind, Ms. Showstack, if you would come forward to one of the microphones here in front.
That's all the way you're getting the point, probably, first to pitch it.
Ms. Showstack? And Karen, is that right?
Yes.
Frankly, she's a subject matter expert, I would say, so, so if, if we have any questions that maybe we don't know the answer to, it's very possible that Ms. Showstack, if she provides some insight, we're having that answer. So, council, if there is...
I could introduce myself a little bit and just give you some background?
Please, please.
Great, so Karen Showstack, I, I live, I'm here from South Florida, I'm one of those transplants that came to this small town, which I love, raised two boys here, thrills I live in, but we did look at the stretch, we loved its proximity to the expressway in the young town.
Just out of curiosity, what part of Florida?
I'm sorry?
What part of Florida, curiosity?
Miami, Miami Lakes.
I know well.
Do you?
Fifteen years in Florida.
Oh, okay.
City manager, Wood Beach.
Beach, no.
More Lauderdale.
I don't know.
A little different climate down there than you're dealing with.
I know.
Big difference.
I was still not active, even after all these years. Just currently, I sit on the Alton County Beer Board, I was appointed by Mayor Coughinger, the county mayor. I own a small company called Core Training Services, which provides instruction and training to corporations and special events on proper alcohol, responsible beverage services, and best practices within the alcohol supply chain. Additionally, I've worked for Friends of the Festival, which is an event management company for the last thirteen years, two years helping, not before that, for the last thirteen years too. And these are, the things I'm gonna tell you about my background are just the parts that are relevant here, I'm not gonna bore you. But with Friends of the Festival, we produce the Riverbend Festival, which has alone a twenty-nine million dollar economic impact to the CH Chattanooga. But additionally, we have the Riverfront Nights Music Series, which is a free concert series at Athens on the river. The American Dream Concert, which benefits the military as a charity. We worked in Coteau's County to help them with, also a great event with Kane Rock recently in September. Additionally, we serve as consultants to other event producers if they want to produce an event, and we have a city, a contract with the City of Chattanooga to help them manage all of the parks in Chattanooga, such as Ross's Landing, Coolidge Park, Renaissance, Renaissance Park, and the Wall Street Bridge. Within that contract, we help events that are five hundred people or more to go through the event process, and there's an approval process, there's an executive committee, there's several agencies that come together to approve the event, and then of course, if there's an alcohol-related, of course, portion of the event, all, my department would, would get involved to help them maintain responsible beverage service at the event. I'm published in industry, I've done talks across the country, webinars for my peers on a lot of topics, including alcohol. And lastly, I'm certified as, and have the designation of Certified Festival Event Executive. So I just wanted to introduce myself to you so that you...
Thank you for that.
My pleasure.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned you manage events over five hundred, what do you mean by manage?
For the, that's a great question. So for the City of Chattanooga, that contract, if the event is more than five hundred people, then we get involved to make sure they don't put a ten, a ten stake through a waterman, for example. Or we help them, guide them through the process of getting health permits, we guide them through all of the steps possible to check everything off to be sure they're completely in compliance to, before they open the doors for their event.
Okay, in that contract, you carry a liability limit on that? Of what?
Well, yes, yes, we, we have the city as an additional.
To what, one million, two million, five million?
Well, wait, let me, let me clarify. So are you asking if we carry the liability for the events that are being produced?
I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, I mean, I've been doing, I do what I'm told to do. This council approves alcohol and public property, and I'm going to push hard for provisions to make it straight, because when something happens and somebody gets hurt or injured because of this incident, alcohol-related incident, a lawsuit comes on board, and I'm the first one named in that lawsuit, not you.
Well, let me clarify.
That's, that's what my concern is, is how you manage that with the City of Chattanooga, if you're managing all that, you, you don't have the deepest pockets as I do.
When I say manage the event, what we're managing is the process for the event to actually be approved.
All right, all right.
The event itself always has to carry their own liability, and because, and I'll say this, those that have the revenue from alcohol sales also have all the liability and the responsibility, so those two, the pro and the con, go hand in hand in this process.
That's true, but looking at the legal side of it, coming from Florida, that's sue happy down there, you know that as well, do they got more attorneys per square mile down there, than any other state I've worked in, this is seven for me. I just say that is, is, there's a lot of activity down there, and if something gets hurt, they sue everybody, they'll sue you, they'll sue the organizer, but the big, who has the big pockets that the courts always seem to come hard down on are the city councils.
Which is why most of the events, not all of them, do list the city... Which is why most of the events, not all of them do list the city as an additional insurance. So that, that is part of the process. And you're correct.
But that doesn't get us off the hook. We still have to, we still have to. I just, I just, when you mentioned to manage, I wanted to know. Because if we do end up going forward with this, I'm not in a position to want to turn this over to you to manage. I would certainly want to use your expertise in regard to training and so forth. But if anybody's going to manage it administratively, I'm an extra height, my administrative management from the charter says it's undermined. Because I want to make sure that nothing happens.
I totally understand. And it is, it is your responsibility. I think that the way that the city, I remember recently, in the last few years, that their parks and recreation had a split in Chattanooga. There was, there's a different structure in the, in the parks and rec-
Yeah.
Typical setup in the city of Chattanooga. So with that change came a need to handle what could be as many as 200 events in those, just those few parks that I mentioned. So it's a, it's a, it's a big responsibility that comes with a lot of detail in order to produce an event that, we all understand, and you especially, that with every event comes so many details, and all of them are meant for, really, you boil it down to just a couple of things, which, which is safety and the enjoyment of the community.
Right.
So I think that, yes, I mean, the, the structure is different, which limited itself to, for us to come on and help manage the process.
Got you now.
Yes, sir. Another point to this, it says to issue approval. No applicant should be issued more than three permits over this section per calendar year. So does that mean our concessionaire, do we have five events to come in?
No. I interpret that as being, um-
He would be the applicant for the beer permit?
Yeah, he wouldn't be the applicant for the beer permit. But, I mean, as far as the event, you may have, uh, the circus, I don't think, I don't think circus would get involved with that. Certain, you know, stuff, help me out with kind of events over there that park would be-
Well, bugger palooza is at the same time as Chattanooga, and they're already talking about, but then going together.
I remember the boxing match they wanted to have.
Yes, sir.
That they wanted to do there. Okay, on the boxing match, I think I heard you say that they want to do four or five events next year.
They've already booked them without alcohol.
This, okay. They've already booked them without alcohol.
But they won't alcohol.
This goes through, if it does go through, they got to pick three of them, and two of them are going to be without alcohol. Because if someone gives them three within one year, that would respond to your question.
Yeah, as if they are the one getting the beer permit. Mr. Hale had to be getting the beer permit.
Look, I don't agree with that.
Hold this up for me. Keep in mind, the only people that can apply to them would be a caterer, which would be defined as a caterer that is licensed cater, Tennessee Department of Health. They would have to actually go get their caterer's license. It couldn't just be anybody that applies to it. As, or it would have to be a bona fide charitable or nonprofit organization. Those are the only two that could be able to be eligible in state law for a temporary permit on the city property.
Can we tie this in? Because this is a good, no applicant will be issued more than three permits. I mean, let's say the boxing, for example. They decide they want to have five events that they've booked for 2018. And by this ordinance here, if it goes through the conditions for approval, they only allow three. Does that mean they can go out there and get a different caterer and have two more? I don't think that's the intent of this, of this work.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to clarify that the Tennessee Alcohol Beverage Commission manages liquor. Anything that's a non-mall beer beverage. Also, there's a certain alcohol content which separates liquor from beer, mall beverage. Typically, as in the city of Chattanooga, the city enforces and manages beer, and the state enforces and manages liquor. So for example, if it was a special event, what you would do is get a, as a nonprofit charitable organization or political organization, or a caterer. Which they don't give those out very often. That's a, that's a hard one to get. Those folks can, can get their one-day permits. There's a $100 fee attached to every one of the days, and you can get 12 a year, a dozen a year of those for the state. The city of Chattanooga has what's called a special event permit also. There's an application process. You go to the beer board, they approve or deny. And they also are the agency that will, has a police officer that enforces. And they are, they're the ones that can issue violations and penalties and suspensions. So I just wanted to clarify the difference of the two, beer versus liquor. Wine falls into the liquor category also.
I guess what my question is, is if we, this says three events a year, and if we have a application for five boxing events next year, under this, the way the intent of this was written, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. City Attorney, that the boxing match, whoever is the caterer can only have three who they can serve here.
The way that you're explaining now that, that the council wants to write it going forward, or?
Well, that's up to the council. But is this the intent that this, this was basically written from several ordinances as I've written from other cities. It needs to be tuned in, it needs to be refined. But I don't necessarily want to start playing games with the situation where we're saying, well, we're going to get this caterer for three of them, and then we'll go get another caterer that has a license and get the additional two of them. That's five for that, for the boxing matches. That's not the intent of how the state was written and presented. That's up to the council. It's not my decision.
Understood. I, I mentioned what I mentioned because I wanted to make sure that, that the council understood the difference between the two, the boxing and the liquor.
One thing to be, we're saying that they can go outside and hire their own caterer instead of using our concessionaire.
That's going to be a legal decision?
Well-
Because I, I-
No, I have that under contract, for three years plus one plus one.
Yes, you do.
So. See, we'll be allowed just to get-
The question comes down to, and you, and you've asked me this question before. It says the concessionaire shall have beverage and food. Beverage and food is beer considered a beverage? Or is it on top of beverage? I mean, that's, that's, I mean, does it say refreshments in the?
Because I brought that up last week.
Yeah, you did. I think it says refreshments, refreshments. Okay, you, yeah, refreshments and food is a refreshment beer? Or is refreshment water and, and Pepsi and Sprite? That's, that's where you come along on that. And I, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not, you go attorney, I can't respond to that.
Well, keep the argument at this, I'd like to take a motion to table this to give it, get some more clarification. So maybe get the sidewalks and the right of ways, all of that, to come back and hash out this repurposed area.
We have a motion to table. Is there a-
Well, we have a motion to second.
No, but you have a-
The motion to table takes precedent over-
Yes.
Previous motion. So, right. So i- is there a second on the motion to table?
Can we discuss more of it after we reply to it?
Well, if we're going to table-
I'm just thinking about that one. We don't miss crap, so.
Right. If there's not a second, it will not be tabled. That allows more opportunity for discussion. Basically, if there is a second on the motion to table, there's really not any further discussion. We will, we will proceed to a vote on whether or not to table. So if there's a second on, to Mr. Cabel's motion, it ends discussion for today.
Say that again?
I'm sorry.
If there is a second-
It's a table, we can't discuss it anymore, right?
Yeah.
It's a second.
Right, we, yeah. It, it would, well, maybe I didn't explain that as well as I should have. If there is a second to Mr. Cabel's motion, it will then go to a vote. If a majority votes to table, then there's, there's really no opportunity. After the second, there's no opportunity for discussion on the subject. So it, so it essentially ends the discussion of this issue. So is, is there a second to the motion to table? Going once, going twice? Motion dies for lack of a second?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Karen, you mentioned Riverbend, the impacts to the $9 million in Chattanooga. Can you estimate what kind of economic impact it could have in East Ridge?
It's, it's tough to say. Yeah, I think that time and surveys and overview of the current, you know, economic climate in Chattanooga, in East Ridge would be helpful. But I can tell you that, you know, special events in general do typically have a notable measurable economic impact on the community by way of lodging tax, of course, employment of local folks. Restaurants are visited more frequently. And again, the, the rental for the park, the permits that are required, health department, of course, a beer permit if you authorize the park rental revenue. So there, that would be part of the overall economic, you know, climate potential.
My pleasure. And increased revenues, we, we can keep our property taxes low.
I have a question as well.
Yes, sir.
And again, this is just because I'm a bit ignorant of the rules in Chattanooga. Readout.
Soccer, yes, sir.
Soccer complex. Is, according to the Chattanooga laws, is beer allowed to be sold there?
You know, I'm not sure. Are you talking about, is that on Bonnie Oaks?
Bonnie Oaks, right.
Is that held on property?
Right. I think it's-
It's a county park.
I'm sorry?
It's a county park.
It's a county.
Okay, so it would not be. Other Chattanooga, I guess what I'm trying to say is, Kent Jordan here is an interesting bird because it, it has so many things. There are soccer fields, baseball fields, all the rest. There is the arena, which could have special events that could be somewhat segregated from all of the athletic activities. Basically, I, I was curious, in the city of Chattanooga, could theoretically a special event permit be issued to someone who wants to have an event at an athletic complex?
Sure, absolutely. I mean, if it's considered a public space in a, in an area that is, has the resources to support it, which this, I have to say, East Ridge has an enormous amount of resources. The city is very functional as a city that supports all the different things that are happening here. So the city's very capable, and Kent Jordan's capable, I believe, of supporting it. So, yes, that answers your question.
Yes, yes.
And I, I do want to say, as this discussion is happening, and I think, I'm so grateful that there is the dialogue because the dialogue is what helps the, the best solution come forward. And I think as you go through this process, this is very possible in this area. They've done with good structure, rigid parameters. And I have dealt for the last total of 15 years of working with my peers across the country in towns smaller than East Ridge and larger than East Ridge. And the, the process is, is very available to produce structured, safe and sound events. There are 10 categories that, when applied and enforced, allow, and we can discuss that over time, but, that allow, if enforced, dramatically reduce the risk of incident. And things like having security in specific areas for alcohol to be sold, choir and training, restricting the number of drinks for sale per person, age of the server restrictions, alcohol-free areas even within an event that has a permit, the prevention of people leaving with alcohol, enforcing that egress, stopping sales prior to the event with enough time for essentially a last call, continuing food sales until the event is over, and also allowing you to monitor your egress, controlling the container size, or, and having distinguishable cups. So these 10, and this is actually from a friend of mine who's a professor at the University of Wisconsin, who did a study on special events, many studies. And so, in working with her over the last 15 years, these 10 qualifiers have really allowed us to make sure that we are doing everything that's possible. So scientifically, we can show how, thanks to these studies, that we're, these, these options and processes are available to us to do anything. With respect, Mr. Cabel, to, to your questions about the right of ways and the sidewalks, and Mr. Miller, I really love your conversation, your dialogue about how to structure a special event to contain it. Alcohol is not the focus of the event. It's, it's adult amenity that's part of the event. That allows the opportunity for certain special events to, it's, it's a portion of revenue, outside of things like ignition or sponsorship or what, that they fall into that nice revenue side versus the expense side. But however, and I can tell you, even though I, I told you my background and it is a big part of, of my career, it's my, my primary focus to ensure that there's instruction and there are rules and they're followed. Part one, a program that I created in 2007 for the Riverbend Festival is I contract nothing but nonprofits to sell beer for us. As, the Friends of Festival is a nonprofit, it's 501(c)(3), so we're able to obtain the special occasions license with the state. The city previously did not mandate that, but recently, Mr. Keith Reisen, the city attorney, has informed everyone on the state side. So, but I, I extend that invitation to nonprofits in Chattanooga. Since that, since I created that program, I put almost $300,000 back into local nonprofits. We're going to sell beer at the festival, so we want to recycle some of that and back into the community that way. So again, and I, and I tell you that just to, to tell a broader story of what's available as a result of a structured and responsible beverage program.
Yes, sir. You look like you have a question.
Yes, I had a question for quite a while. I've been waiting, and some of my answers have been, some of the questions have been answered. In reviewing this, like Mr. Cabel said, since I've received this, there is several requirements to be met for the application process, which I like the review of the city manager, the police chief, and the building official, and all the above. And then there's 19 conditions, if I counted them correctly, that have to be met for a condition to approve. And then there's still wording to allow, if we feel as a council there's unreasonable public health, welfare, safety issues, if there is extraordinary purpose and expense to our police, to our city, we still have the ability to deny any permit that is being requested. Again, it has to be provided just 45 days in advance to evaluate it and, and research it. I do like the additional rigid things that you have mentioned, the additional tier or four.
That, what she, what she has brought forth doesn't need to be important. Those who, those who would be able to straighten that and follow through. If this process goes in, I don't, we follow the same tents. I don't know if we call them tent stipulations or, what did you call them?
I personally call them categories of qualifiers.
Qualifiers, qualifiers, yeah. I don't know if we call them that qualifiers. But what you basically said would regulate, would certainly regulate how you got the, the bands, who would distribute, who would serve, certainly the size of the cups, all that bit. Of course, you know, you also have areas designated- Of course, you know, you also have areas designated that you weren't allowed to build a hawkeye on, if you went beyond that, that point, you had to dump it or didn't like it, you got arrested, simple as that. Just follow a zero tolerance in regard to anyone who goes further with what the 10 stipulations were.
The focus in any special event is always to avoid two customers of concern, which are an underage person or an intoxicated person. It's illegal to serve someone who's at the point of intoxication, and it's also obviously illegal as of July 1988, I believe, that you have to be 21 or older. So those are our two customers of concern, and so honestly, programs are built around avoiding sales to those two customers of concern and then applying best practices that allow you to understand.
And the other thing that we also incorporate into is the amount, the number of distribution areas would be allowed. For example, you know, you know, you're allowed tariff, you know, five or 10, you can limit that down to two or three, depending on the size, depending on the size of the event.
Right, the size of the venue would let itself, sorry.
And what we'll do is you will stack every one of those distribution points, which sells a beer. Because I want somebody to be able to watch people come at that, hey, I remember you, to be able to turn them off.
That's fabulous, and actually, the cutting off process is a big part of our training and, you know, it takes a team, it takes a team, and we have some best practices that we instruct folks on with that process to keep it short and kind and sweet. But I think the size of the venue and the resources available at the venue would dictate, like you said, how many locations and how it would be structured. But again, all of that would first need, the first thing that would need to be defined is what is, is a lot of better word, the container. What is the parameters around Kent Jordan that would be designated as this is where the event can happen, scaling it. So for example, the River Cross's landing is a mile and a half long, and it feels like it's only a foot wide actually, but it's a very long and narrow waterfront. Riverbend takes up the majority of the waterfront or incident, however, if you scale that, you would look at the head of the hooch, for example, which takes up a certain section. The Southern Brewers Festival takes up a different section, our summer concert series is different. So the park can actually be broken up into many different sections and sold that way.
That's part of the application process, that's review.
Absolutely.
It comes in, this is what they want, that's not necessarily what's going to walk out with. We have the authority, staff does, to say it's too big, need to be concentrated down, we don't need to be traveling over here, too close to the lake, too close to this. We set it up, send it to the council, and hopefully the council will approve what staff is considering.
And that parameter is done with safety in mind and bringing the community together in mind, and that will set the tone for the way that the event proceeds and is.
If they do go forth, if they do end up approving it, then we'll be talking.
I'm looking forward to it. You've already talked about Florida and Chicago.
I don't believe there's Florida anymore.
No, me neither.
By choice.
Do we have any other questions?
So, yes, so where I led that into was, talking about the administrative.
Yes.
Handling and oversight, and penalties or fines or anything in the industry. So I kind of would want to understand what.
I think, I think we certainly, the penalties, and I think we need to, you and I talked a little bit about, we need to put some penalties in here and possibly given. For example, if an event gets carried away, if it does, I want to have the authority, without bringing this body together, which would almost be impossible to do, Saturday night at 5 o'clock, and I feel that this is out of the net, to shut it down, to shut the beer sales down, with conferencing with my police chief and my fire chief and possibly the mayor, he's a rounder vice, vice mayor. But I want to have that opportunity to do that before something goes completely black.
And on the event producer's side.
I don't think, you know, I've done enough of these, and you've done enough of these, it probably is not going to happen because you're going through such a rigid process, you can eliminate some of those. It's when you start making exceptions and not following your conditions that you end up getting the trial.
That's, it's correct, it's a slippery slope. It's a slippery, I believe you when you say that. Yes, they're just, so I want to clarify what the discussion was, because I was thinking about my answer when you were discussing, I want to make sure I'm covering it. So the last part of the discussion was about the permitting process, correct, about getting out of hand, getting out of hand. So with that being said, with the getting out of hand, the city of Chattanooga's beer board has a police officer who is a regulatory bureau, it's a beer regulatory bureau, that police officer monitors special events. He works very closely with the producers of the events. He, for example, I run, I do compliance checks on my own events, for example. So the same process that the police department takes to investigate a Chili's or a Riverbend, I run those internally because I want to see if there's myself and be proactive, if there's any weak link or a problem within the facility. Officer Collins works very closely with me and other event producers in the area to ensure that not only are you going into the event with good planning, but the event is actually being monitored. There's several police officers that can help with that process. And yes, if there's a feeling that it's not in control.
Not feeling, I don't want to say feeling, I want to say incident. If an incident occurs that gives justification to close it down, I want to be able to have that opportunity to close it down.
And working with the police.
With the beer, with the beer, stop sales.
Stop sales. And that's, that's happened before at other events, and it's usually a collaboration between, because the event producer wants it to be just as safe as the city does and the police officer and all the officials. So it's typically done in collaboration with you, yourself, the police department, and event producer to all be on the same page so that when that communication happens, it's a consistent communication to all of the folks that are involved. Whether it's beer or it's, I hate to say this, but a bomb threat or any kind of situation that will have an action, it's usually the folks down in the city and everyone comes together to be on the same page so that the communication is consistent.
Another additional question?
Yes.
Yes, sir. No, no questions. I understand and appreciate the patience of everyone, but this is really the first opportunity we have had to really discuss this, and so with, there are obviously a lot of questions, a lot of, a lot of things that need to be explained.
So, to give you my take on it, I represent citizens of East Ridge. There are citizens in favor and citizens who are against it, so that's why I'm taking, as Mr. Cable is, others, you know, a very close look at this and try to get possible out and have immediate, that's why I want to ensure we have, if it passes, we have oversight, we have penalties, we have fines, we have it being controlled in a very tightly and rigid, is the word you used, manner. Like I said, if it's passed. So that was some of the questions and some of the understanding why I'm asking these questions and trying to do what I feel that my constituents would want done in the majority of it. One last question that I have, I personally have, is I think we wrestle with the word applicant underneath the condition, the very first condition for approval, whether it is a applicant or if it is a caterer, I don't know if we can or would adjust that, say applicant and or caterer, so we don't have a loophole if this ordinance is passed to circumvent the three lingering that this ordinance is trying to achieve. That's a good one, as we can go back and looking at this, it consists, all of this, of course, has to be consistent with state law, and the state law is clear as to who can get the temporary permits as it relates to the sale of beer on a publicly owned property. So when it says no applicant in this case, we could still have to go back to what applicant is allowed, we would fall back onto state law. But as it is written right now, no applicant shall be issued more than three permits. I've written down here, which appears to be, it's not really clarified, the intent is, it may not necessarily be that it's referred to the applicant so much as it is the actual event. And that's the note I have taken down. If that's what I understand, it is a concern, it may take a little bit of, you know, gymnastics to get to it, right, to figure something out, but that one may be a little tough because it truly, at the end of the day, for a publicly owned property, there's two people, two types of people that can get these, it's a caterer, a nonprofit or a political organization. And if those are the ones, you will have identified potentially, if it was the boxing or, I think it was boxing, if there's five boxings by a boxing company A, that they go get a caterer for three events, and they go get a caterer Z for the other two, this ordinance would be permitted. If I was to look at, they want me to try to address that issue and somehow bring that back in so that we wouldn't have the same event.
So it would be the caterer applying for the event instead of boxing?
Well, it would be the caterer applying for the beer permit, not necessarily the event. So they would be considered the applicant. That's correct. They're the only ones that can be issued the beer permit.
When you say the caterers, they don't give to that very often?
Mobile catering permits with the state agency are not, there's a very limited list, it's probably 200, that are on the list. And again, there's the state law, which is, which forces and regulates liquor, non-mal beverages, you have to be a nonprofit, which is a 501(c)(3), a charitable organization, a political organization in order to obtain what's called, it's called a special occasion license. And there, you seek out the license for one day at a time. So for example, if you sell, let's say you have an event that's five days long, then you would have a permit purchase for each one of those days, five days. However, they are limited to how many they can, the state law says that they're limited on how many they can actually obtain in a year for any one organization. Difference with the caterer, though, the difference, there is a different number, there is no limit of how many a mobile catering permit can be contracted, essentially. If it's a nonprofit or a charitable organization or political organization does that limits on how many in a year.
The caterer is defined under state law, it's one that has to operate, offer food and beverage services for a fee at various locations, which operates a permanent catering hall on an exclusive basis or restaurant, and has a complete and adequate commercial kitchen facility, and is a licensed caterer by the Tennessee Department of Health.
That goes back to my question, does a beer, people selling beer have to have the health license or not?
Well, the short answer is, if they're a caterer, yes, if it's a bona fide charitable organization, they actually don't, they have, their own volunteers can serve the alcohol. Now, we can put that in here to the extent it's not charitable, they have to have some qualification with Tennessee Department of Health and incorporate that into this ordinance if you want to.
The city of Chattanooga's structure is set that when, excuse me, the state agency, when you're applying for a permit, if the event producers are a for-profit, however they would like to sell, let's say, apply for a state license, they would contract a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3) or a charitable organization. That charity would go and seek out the state license. So the license and the liability and the revenue collection in that transaction would all fall under the nonprofit, who's been kind of absorbed by the, let's say, in this case, the for-profit producer. Well, I can tell you that it's worked through, throughout the years, that the nonprofit is the permit holder, again, as long as they, you still have to qualify, you still have to be approved for this permit, but that nonprofit or mobile catering company or charitable or political organization would be contracted by an organization to handle the process.
So if, so boxing, would it happen, they get hired, say, friends of the, the strip or the, leave town for five years, they get hired in to go get the bargain, sell the beverage?
But keep in mind, that nonprofit is the one, I mean, the nonprofit that goes and applies for it is the entity that has to take the money. So there's no guarantee that that nonprofit will soon be able to, or would agree to do that if boxing came in. If boxing, yes, we want the charitable organization to be the applicant. There's no guarantee the boxing organization is going to actually get the funds because it's got to be collected by the nonprofit.
That should be a great work ethic.
There, right.
Typically, a special event has the sale of alcohol as the revenue source to work for the event, admission to admission and sponsorship and some of the others. So that transaction and that money, the revenue share, it's, a lot of that producers don't want to share in that expense, so, you know, that is taken into account. However, I will tell you that there are several nonprofits that are very qualified to responsibly sell alcohol and qualified to dispense it and to, you know, handle this alcohol supply chain properly, so it happens. Where for-profit organizations come in, produce fabulous events throughout the area, and then leave behind for that local nonprofit money in the bank. I can tell you that the Marines, the Navy, the Chattanooga Food Bank, I've contracted, the Kidney Foundation, the sale of beer, Riverbend in one year paid for the entire children's nutritional program at the Chattanooga Food Bank. These happen to be my favorite chunks to cut. I've had churches, believe it or not, come and sell beer for us at the festival over the years, and Coca-Cola products and several other options. The Navy and the Marines use Riverbend and other events that we contracted for to fund the annual, their annual military ball. They do, they use this money so that none of the soldiers have to, like, take to the celebration of the birth of the Navy or the birth of the Marines. So, and my new partner, the Chattanooga Rugby Club, has raised money every year for the rebuilding of that and creating new programs. I don't want to drag it out to you, Parv, but I can tell you that there's a lot of good that can domino as a fact, as an effect of producing events in the area, also bringing the community together in a social gathering, whether it has alcohol or it doesn't, that in and of itself adds animation and creativity and gathering within a community.
What is the age of the person who will sell out of sale beer?
I'm sorry?
The age of the person who will have to sell beer.
And in a restaurant, you can be 18 years old and sell, but within a special event, your insurance will not allow you to hire anyone that's not 20, it's going to be 21 at a special event. However, you know, I'll leave it at that, 21 years old.
As I said, that was my explicit intent, you know. And I asked this last council, and I think we touched on it on this one, but I still don't think we have an answer, and I think it really impacts the decision of this, is how does this impact the contract, the existing contract we have with Time Foods and the refreshment sales? Well, from my understanding, is they're not capable, they don't have the ability to sell that type of an item. And so when the contract was entered, it was contemplated with the items that that, the food vendor, whoever it is, is authorized to sell. They don't have that authority to sell beer. I don't think that would be contemplated as one of the items under that contract. When in an event, if we have an arena, this past, then you would have the refreshments and food sales, and then there would be another designated area for, to stop the sale. It would have to be by, the sales would have to be by the applicant, in this case, if it fits the, the Corret Club comes in, decides if they want it. the Corvette Club comes in, stuff they wanted in our office, if it's a nonprofit, it would have to have its own sales. If it's not, it would have to hire a caterer to come in and service that event, the both would coincide during the event.
Just a question for you, Karen, on your qualifiers, do you allow beer to be sold next to food and refreshments? You do?
Yeah, our event method and psychology is to make it as convenient as we can for the patron. So they're separated though, using key lines, controlling the in and the out, there's one way in, one way out to every beer location. We don't put them too close to each other to try to, and if they are close to each other, we try to make sure that the out is away from.
Okay, two separate lines though.
Oh, yes.
You have them, what I'm saying is you can't walk up to a concessionary and say, I want Coke, I want water, I want beer, I want two hot dogs.
No, sir, no.
Okay. And you have to separate beer sales from the food and the, and the.
And I apologize, I misunderstood, when you said next to each other, I meant physically two separate groups, but yes, they are separate groups of us, there are separate lines, there is, it's completely, it's got its own process, which is about six.
That's one of your qualifiers.
Yeah, it would fall under the category, the qualifier of, it could be under security staff and limiting, limiting specific areas, things like that, yes, first. And I want to clarify too, that the reason that it's kept so separately is so that there is a control from start to finish of all alcohol, including inventory, managing that and ensuring that it's not, that it's contained and contained.
Do we have other questions? So this is first reading of this particular ordinance. Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor?
Just reading, what they have put in here is section eight dash two oh seven, I had a temporary permit application fee of three hundred dollars. I was notified today that the max is two hundred and fifty dollars to pay off. So that would be admitted, section eight dash two oh seven for application. That would have to be two hundred and fifty. Do you have any other change? Looking at section eight dash two two zero, section one, fire I put in there, you'll see at the end there, talks about an order to be considered for a permanent applicant shall be required to reach requirements established under section eight dash two oh seven, A, when I go back to two ones, eight dash two oh seven, there is an A, it's just one, so I'll do a stop to prepare on that one, but that's all.
Do you want two, under four, two twenty-four, additions for approval, A, no person shall be issued, in this section, somehow put the, no applicant slash caterer?
Probably, probably should want to say, is it an app, what are you talking, so you're talking about section four?
Yes, section four A. After short, the council wants, do we bid three or what?
It's gonna be tough. Because I understand that the concern is more for the event more so than it is the applicant.
But I'm just looking for clarity because when people start coming in, I don't want to get myself into a bind as interpretation. You've got one interpretation, I've got another interpretation.
Wouldn't you come up with just three, like if somebody just had three bins? What was that?
We borrowed, that was another one, we were, had a bar, I think we were using a bar in front of. That was one that I had in two other cities.
Well, I was like, yeah, so like, why would you go turn them away, I mean, maybe?
That's what the council wanted by the city. The council wanted to limit because we didn't want to turn all events into ones that had to have alcohol. It was, you know, that's, that's what, that's what the council.
It's up to us to, we don't have five bins.
That's up to you.
You can, you're willing to only have three?
No, I'm, I'm just giving this to you, I don't vote on this.
Why?
Because it's up to you to make that decision whether you want to have three or what you want to have, or just let it be. That's, that's a council decision.
Well, I'm just wondering what we came up with.
I came, I put this in front of you at three because several other cities that I've, that have had this type of language, we limited it to three.
But it didn't work?
I don't know. I mean, those communities were in the population of sixteen-five to thirty-five thousand. Not as big as Chattanooga or Hamilton County.
We do have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance. This is first reading. Provided it passes, there is opportunity to make additional changes for the second reading. Where we stand right there.
You think we want to add or delete, but this is my question. Would we consider the parks overcrowded?
That would almost be a question as to what the police chief and fire chief, I would consider the park overcrowded when we have lanes of egress and ingress around parking lots and circulation completely blocked by vehicles. Because it limits the city's ability to bring in fire trucks, police cruisers and more importantly EMS units in case we needed to get to a point of an incident.
Well, how do we have the, had them exposed? Did the flood and plume down all at one time? Parked, maybe way overcrowded because of lack of parking. Part of cars parked outside of the road, you had to work till you got down through there, they were parked in the grass. And all the asphalt parking lots.
I don't, I've seen that for baseball and grass.
But all asphalt, flood and plume had all of their, all the lanes lined up.
I was down there.
And so they're going to be down there selling beer at the same time, I mean, they're going to be better walking around over the parks drinking beer.
No, 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 not.
We're going to have.
The sale of, the sale, if an event has beer, it doesn't mean that they have two hundred and sixty-five acres to walk around with a beer in their hand. There's going to be limits established upon where they can drink that beer. If it is a boxing match that's happening in the civic center, I don't want to see beer in a parking lot. Anybody with it is going to dump it or get arrested, period. If the areas are in the fields, you will have an area that's either blocked off, marked, specifically marked with signage saying that this is the area upon which you are permitted to drink alcohol or not to drink beer, then why? Other than the.